I will call this meeting to order. And a quick, couple of quick logistics for this meeting as this is our inaugural round of using Zoom for a city council meeting. If you could, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand in front of the camera. Sam, I believe that you are on audio only, and so if you just want to jump in, we will accommodate.
I'll just clear my throat.
Perfect, perfect. We'll make this work. And then, as you'll recall from our last, if you'll recall from our last meeting, all votes will be roll call votes as we move through the agenda this evening. Any questions on logistics before we get started? Hearing done. With that, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard. Councilmember Husnick.
Husnick here.
Councilmember Munson. Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
And Mayor Bane.
Here. With that, we'll ask everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and if you'd like to cut your camera, it is in the bottom left hand of your screen. We'll pause for just a moment. And with everybody ready, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Excellent. Council, before you, you have an agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, Karen, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sorry about that. Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Munson.
Yes.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Our agenda, this is approved. Our next agenda item this evening is our open forum. Please note that while we are in remote meeting format, open forum will continue to be open, although we are changing structure. Open forum this evening is by written comment, and in the future, anybody who would like to present to open forum, please feel free to submit your comments to info@cityofforestlake.com, and your comments will be read during this open forum period. Please note, when you're sending emails into that email inbox, to please note for open forum in the subject line, so we know that you intend for your comments to be publicly read. Dan, do we have any open forum for this evening?
There is one open forum letter, and I'll go ahead and read that right now. The letter is from Jim Dibble, who is at 9559 North Shore Trail in Port Lake. He states, "I'm a board member for the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District and a board member for the Forest Lake Lake Association. There have been several inquiries about Republic not picking up yard waste containers in Forest Lake area. I called Republic and it went to voicemail stating their office is closed due to COVID-19. Their website is stating that they will not pick up the yard waste due to the nonessential rule in place. This week, the governor has changed this rule for landscapers and yard services. Because of this, Republic should be holding up their contract and picking up the yard waste containers. I called SRC and they are taking yard waste. This past week, people have been dumping their containers into the wetlands. This has a very negative effect on our lakes and streams in our watershed district. Please help the townspeople and the watershed district and hold Republic accountable. Thank you."
Thank you, Dan. Are there any other open forum comments this evening?
That was it.
All right. Thank you for that. Council, our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have items 6A and 6L for consideration. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes. Councilmember Gerard.
Mayor Bane, I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I would like to see 6H, the resolutions to adopt the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, removed from the consent.
Very good. I will entertain either a, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of 6A through 6G and 6I through 6L. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson.
Aye.
Mayor Bane.
Aye. Okay, first action item this evening is 6H from the consent agenda, which was removed, which is the adoption of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. Councilmember Gerard.
Yes, I asked this to be removed. As we all know, this is a very long tedious process, and many, many people in the City of Forest Lake and the staff, the planning commission, parks and rec, individual systems provided input. And I just want to recognize all the effort that went in. It lasts just about three years to get to this point. So it's really the only reason I want to remove it. I think it's fine to act, and they did a great job. I just want to recognize for all the work that was done.
Thank you, Councilmember Gerard, and I echo your, you did a great job of teeing that up, and I echo your sentiments exactly. Thank you to all of the commissions, working groups that have put time into this, hours of staff. We've had residents who have contributed and participated in a number of different ways. And look forward to approving tonight, and with thanks for everybody's efforts in getting us to this point. Before I entertain a motion to approve, any other comments or questions related to the Comprehensive Plan this evening?
Mayor Bane, Council Husnick, I'd make the motion that we adopt Resolution 041320-01, the adoption of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and the Comprehensive Sewer Plan. And along with that, to say that I concur with Mr. Gerard's assessment. I mean, these things take years, and this is the second time that I've been working on one of these things. So kudos to the folks that got this thing done.
I'll second.
There's a motion, and Councilmember Gerard has seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Councilmember Husnick.
Husnick votes aye.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Aye.
Councilmember Munson. Mayor Bane.
Aye. Motion has approved. Next item on the agenda this evening is Item 7A, the Common Bond Headwaters Apartment Building Concept Review. Donovan is taking us through this. And just a quick logistics note here, there are a lot of faces on the screen, and so if I miss a raised hand, please just jump in. We'll do our best here, trying to monitor for any questions. But again, if you have something that needs to be interjected, please just jump in. Karen, go ahead, please.
It would be really helpful for me, too. I know there's only five council members, but it would be helpful for me if you said your name first before you made your motion, so I know who's speaking as I'm going along recording everything.
Will do.
To speak, everybody, please say your name first.
Excellent. Will do. With that, Donovan, you want to kick us off?
Sure. I'd like to present the the concept plan for the Common Bond apartment building. And this is something that the Plan Commission reviewed in their January meeting. And they had some comments, and now Common Bond has come back with a revised plan. And the location of this is just kind of southeast of the transit center, well, southwest, southeast of the service center over in the Headwaters area, shown by the outline with the blue parcel here. The the plant itself is not within the Headwaters Village area as shown here, which was original 2007 PUD district for this area, and that was a concern of the Plan Commission. And so the Common Bond has come back with the site plan that you see here on your screen. It's an intersection of Fitzgerald Trail here, the future Headwaters Boulevard to be constructed by a developer here. It's a 53-unit building, four-story. This is also in the airport overlay zoning district, but that's not, to be, I don't believe, a concern. The building could be a total of 145 feet to actually be in conflict with the airport zoning, but the building will be probably top off somewhere in the 55, mid 50s as far as height for that four-story building. Access is from the future Headwaters Boulevard with adequate separation from Fitzgerald Trail. It's a total of a 2.3 acre site. And they've, as you can see, oriented the building toward Fitzgerald Trail, with the parking on that south side. The total of 96 spaces, which is 1.8, a ratio of 1.8 spaces per unit. The code is 2.1. And some flexibility for parking ratios is granted in the zoning code if requested by the developer. And also, they're requesting a, they will be requesting a flexibility with having no covered parking for this. This parking ratio was part of the discussion with the Plan Commission. And there was some concern about that number being lower, especially since many of these units are above above the one-bedroom unit size, which we've seen more recently. I believe the ratio was about, you know, 25% one-bedroom, 25% two-bed, 50% two-bedroom, and 25% three-bedroom. This building will be pretty similar to the other Common Bond building. This building is proposed. Headwaters Landing has a 1.75 parking space ratio. And we're also, I believe, deferring to Common Bond, given their extensive experience with many properties similar to this. This is proposed to be affordable housing, affordable to 30% to 50% area median income. And, you know, for these 53 units. Chief Newman did review the plan and didn't find any, you know, concerns with emergency access. As well as Ryan, the scene engineer, also provided some comments. And they regarded, you know, having a sidewalk the, along the streets. As well as, just to note that the future utility for public water and sewer extensions should be put in before the Headwaters Boulevard is constructed, so that the street doesn't need to be trenched in order to install those public utilities. The, what we see here is actually just a portion of the total, like five and a half acre lot. So perhaps there's a future minor subdivision involved. Both of these lots would be legally conforming. And what we're seeing here is simply a concept plan. The zoning code does give applicants the ability to receive non-binding feedback for these type of concept plans, so that we're not expecting a motion. Simply, it's really to foster dialogue between the applicant and council. And so no motion was was taken at the Plan Commission, and it's simply to kind of give you a heads up. This is, they planned to propose this. And this is simply a first step of a multi-step process. And this is partially, well, is coming upon the successful adoption of the Comprehensive Plan that allows, you know, high-density residential within this area. And Common Bond will probably be coming forth with a zoning map amendment that will be prior to the full adoption of a new zoning map to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. So this is really that first step, incremental step for those to get the zoning appropriate for this. And this is, of course, you know, the comprehensive rezoning will take, you know, many months, definitely into 2021. But I want to give you a heads up also that this won't be the last you'll see of this one, since they want to come in before the actual zoning map, new zoning map is in place that would allow this this type of apartment building, currently it's neighborhood commercial zoning. So with that, I'd like to take any questions from the city council.
We'll take any initial questions of council, and then I know, I think we've got a number of representatives from the project plan, so happy to hear any input from the project plan or the project team as well. Any council questions before we get comment from the project team? Councilmember Gerard.
I don't have any questions. I have really a comment that the first time that Common Bond and Len Pratt met with the Planning Commission, it was on a different parcel. It was fairly reasonably panned by the planning commission. And I have to commend both Len and Common Bond for really taking to heart the comments that the planning commission made. And they really came back with a different parcel, a different setup here that I think is a whole lot more workable for all parties involved. So it's really just a comment that I wanted.
Very good. Councilmember Beistrum.
My question would be with regard to just our, and I'm not sure if the correct word is, density of affordable housing in the community. Where are, I know some studies have been done around that, kind of, you know, where are we? Where are we construction-wise relative to that research and those studies that have been done?
Well, the, I'm not sure exactly which study you're referring to, as far as, is it local study? Or there was a county housing study done a couple of years ago, kind of a market study. There is, within our comp plan, there is goals for affordable housing, and this, and this type of affordable housing fits in really well, because this is not the affordability that the market can produce. And so in that way, we're all, we're working to achieve a Comprehensive Plan goal. Is it, but I'm still confused on what, is there a particular concern you have, or which study you're referring to?
No, I just, I frequently receive feedback from the community on the number of apartment buildings that we have in our community. And so I'm, that's kind of where I'm going with this a little bit. I'm just trying to better understand, you know, why we, why this would be a better choice for us over, you know, you know, quad homes or townhomes or, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, at this point, this is, you know, it seems that the way the market is responding to Forest Lake market conditions, we've been receiving more multiple-family projects. I don't believe that's gonna, I think we're gonna see some more on the pike. And obviously, current economic, you know, conditions involving COVID-19 can impact this. But we are in conversations with other developers involving these other, other single-family projects. And so, that's, I mean, I think we'll, we might see some of those coming down the pike soon. But this is, I think they're still finding there's a need, and with the amount of retail within Forest Lake, I think that, you know, there's a demand for more affordable housing at this scale.
I have a question, and maybe a question similar to Councilmember Beistrum's in that, and it's not necessarily related to this project, but this project certainly spurs the question, which is the need to potentially explore a comprehensive housing study specifically for Forest Lake. I know, and I hear a lot of similar sentiments of what Councilmember Beistrum commented on, reflected a community sentiment around perception of need. And it would be great for us to have a tool for us to reach into that, you know, kind of describes market dynamics, both around density and type of housing, and something to really help us respond to those concerns, and also properly address these types of projects as they come in. It seems like that has started as maybe some quiet comments, and it's just gotten louder and louder the more multifamily units have come online. And I know that, you know, there's some density requirements in our Comprehensive Plan that are going to mean that we have continued to have more projects come online, and I think it'd be great for us to have some sort of a tool or assessment that really is specific to our market that helps to respond to those things. So again, not specific to this project, but I would encourage staff to look at. I think maybe it's time that we look at that type of a study.
And I would, I would echo that sentiment, and that's kind of the direction that I was headed here. It's that I feel like I don't have, I mean, I know that we have things included in our Comprehensive Plan, but additional context for me, kind of to better understand, need, you know, relative to, you know, kind of the interests in developing here, would be really helpful for me.
I think I, I have heard those multifamily issues myself. I think this would be a good thing to refer to the Plan Commission, to have them start to noodle. And then, I think you're right, I think some kind of study that tells us, are we overbuilding market? You know, the multifamilies, should we be concentrating more on the split level or the duplexes or whatever else we said? You know, whether, one of the things that drive all this is vacancy rates. Do we, you know, what's the vacancy rates as far as current apartments that we have? So I think it's a good thing for the Plan Commission and plan staff to start to look at and propose some kind of a study and a review of where we're going.
Do you have a project or a question specific to the project? Has Park Six and Trails considered this project yet? And have they weighed in on, I know the initial plan included a dog park, and I think that's been scaled back. Have they weighed in on any sort of amenity in lieu of park dedication fees?
No, we have, they have not reviewed this. This is really the first, you know, first steps are just this Plan Commission, City Council review. That's certainly an opportunity for conversation with the applicants, the project team, because it seems like they are, they want to look for some alternatives, maybe provide an amenity on site. I'll follow up with that one.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of council before we get some comment from the project team here?
Mayor Bane, Council Husnick, I would just like to see, you know, the study thing's a great idea to me, because, you know, years ago, they always talked about a ratio, kind of a ratio between single-family and multifamily and apartments and all that. And I'd sure like to see that, where we stand with that. And so we're not throwing something out of balance here, if that's the case. And just like to know what that is. So that's the only comment I have about it.
That's great. I'd like to welcome the members of the project team. Offer any comments?
Good evening. This is Andy Hughes from Common. Can folks hear me well enough?
If you could speak up just a little bit.
All right, thanks. I'm the Director of Acquisition and Development for Common Bond, and I'm joined by Len Pratt, our project seller, Richard Palmer, the seller's broker, and Nick Coniff, our project architect. Just to emphasize a couple of points that staff suggested or staff shared. This proposal does represent a pivot from a prior project in our part. So late last year, we had proposed a multifamily project across the street from here, but we heard the planning commission's feedback that they really wanted to reserve that parcel for a future commercial cluster. So I think we took that feedback in mind, and we were able to pivot to across the street with, in collaboration with our project seller, Len Pratt. And then in terms of the market, I appreciate the council's concerns about overall policy and things like that. But I think I'd just share anecdotally, we're really especially excited about this project, because Headwaters Landing, the project that we're just wrapping up, just north of this site, just completed earlier this month, and we're expecting that to fully lease up with about 30 to 45 days. And so from our perspective, our program for this site, which includes a variety of units, one, two, and three bedrooms, great amenities, high-quality finishes, things like that, has been really well received by the market. And so we're really pushing for a second phase here, given what we see is a really high unmet demand. It mentioned it's going to fill up in about a month to a month and a half. We typically see six to nine months for lease ups. And so, again, just anecdotally, looking at the demand for this project, we definitely see an increasing demand for it. And then in terms of location, the location next to the Y, the county service center, and the parking right and transit are really conducive to the project we're trying to build here as well. And so a higher density or medium-density proposal, such as we're thinking about here, we think is appropriate, given those amenities. Whereas a lower-density approach, quad homes and split homes and things like that, would probably be better suited for a different location in the city, which is why we're looking at a four-story multifamily building on this site. But again, I just want to thank staff, staff and the planning commission for their feedback to help us get to this point, and I'd be happy to answer any questions council members may have on the proposal.
Council, any questions of the project team?
I don't have one.
Hearing none, Mr. Hughes, and thank you for being so responsive to the planning commission's needs. I know that they expressed that in the planning commission meeting, and we appreciate that as well. And we look forward to seeing future next steps as this project progresses.
Thank you very much.
Donovan, staff, do you need anything else from council at this time?
No, I think, I think that's it. Thank you. Really, this is just the time for non-binding feedback, and I believe that councils provide that. Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to our next agenda item this evening, which is 7B, which is the Resolution 4132002, the approval of the MGA login account. Chief Peterson, I believe you're going to walk us through this one. Chief, you might be on mute. You're very muffled. Not really. I can, we can tell you're talking. It's just very difficult.
I can barely hear him.
Give it one more shot. Otherwise, I would, what we can do is we can flip-flop to the next agenda item and come back. I'll ask a quick opinion here. If we're going to flip-flop agenda items, do we need an official motion to do that, or are we able to just call an audible?
Your Honor, you actually do need a motion at this point in the, in the meeting to change the agenda order.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we move Agenda Item 7B to be after 7D. to be after 7D, the eighth hardware invoices. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Husnick has seconded. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Gerard votes aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Munson votes aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Councilmember Husnick votes aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Councilmember Beistrom votes aye.
Mayor Bain?
Mayor Bain votes aye. We will move on to Item 7C, which is Resolution 413203, the airport lease rate adjustment. Dan, I believe you're going to walk us through this?
I am. Members of the council, before you, what you have is Resolution 41320-03, which is the annual or bi-annual airport lease rates adjustments. If you recall, the Airport Commission met on March 4th and made a recommendation to increase the leases of the annual rental rates at the airport by 3%, which is based off of the previous year's CPIU, which is a mechanism in their leases that they use for lease rate adjustments. The one thing that this resolution also does is that it also eliminates the $280 flat charge that was also charged to the airport leases. That has been paid out, that 280 was there as a result of the paving of the runway. The general fund as of last year was fully repaid for that project. And given the fact that the general fund has been repaid, the Airport Commission made the rec, made the motion to eliminate that $280 flat rate as part of their annual lease rate adjustment. So we have a resolution before you, which encompasses both, it increases the lease rate by 3% and it also eliminates a $280 flat charge. I do have one, just kind of quick procedural note to bring everybody's attention. When I first presented this at the council workshop, I rec, I said I was going to come forward as part of a bigger fee schedule updates. We do the resolution and then enroll that into a bigger fee schedule update as well. However, due to the COVID-19 breakout, the other fee schedules, other parts of fee schedule update that we were going to do have been postponed. So rather than do a single ordinance update for one fee and then do another one down the road, we're going to roll this rate adjustment into that next fee schedule. So this is still going to be in effect for upcoming year. We're just not going to adjust the fee schedule at this point. We do have a T-dup, so the next time we do a fee schedule adjustment, this will go in as part of that fee schedule adjustment. But at this point, it's staff recommendation to approve Resolution 4132003, which eliminates a $280 flat charge and adjusts the lease rates for the Forest Lake Airport. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on this at this time.
Sorry, I'm on mute. And thank you, Dan. Any questions of staff on this item?
Mayor Bain, Councilmember Husnick, comment I'd like to make about it is that this was a result of, of the fact that, you know, we adjust those rates every other year according to CIP and so the lease rates are, are certainly in line with that. And then also that, that charge that was been going on, that was a big dispute there at the airport and to eliminate the, it was a compromise decision by myself and, and Mayor Bain and, and Patrick and whoever else was involved, that we just can't go back on this thing, okay? And it was a compromise that I, I felt was fair and equitable and was one way of eliminating this controversy. It hasn't, hasn't done that, but, but I think it's the one way of, of moving on with this controversy. So just want, just so everybody knows that this was a result of several meetings with staff and, and others that, that was part of that compromise. So that's all I have about it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Husnick. I'll echo those comments. Like to thank the Airport Commission and all of the airport users that participated in our recent joint workshop. I know it was helpful to hear feedback and helpful to talk about how we can help move forward on this item. I know that this $280 charge has been an area of conflict for many years. And I think the opportunity to drop it now at this point in the, at this point is an opportunity for us to move forward. I know there are some users that are looking for a retroactive adjustment and essentially a refund or a forgiveness of a couple of years of that charge. And I, I'm not a fa, I'm not a fan of rewriting history, especially when there are past councils involved. And this particular item doesn't just cover this council, but two councils before it. And so I think this is a great opportunity for us just to move on. And no, we're not going to make absolutely everybody happy on this item, but I think it's fair. The rate adjustments are, as it relates to the lease, are, are fair. And I think this is just a great opportunity to move forward. So thanks to staff for getting us to this point, as well as to the Airport Commission and airport users. And I think this is a great next step for the airport and also keeps the airport in strong financial standing, which I think is also an important item, both for airport users as well as for overall residents of Forest Lake. Any other questions on this particular topic? I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor Bain?
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry Kathy, I butted in.
Councilmember Beistrom?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 04-13-20-03, eliminating the $280 flat charge and adjusting lease rates for the Forest Lake Airport.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Mayor Bain, I'll second the motion. Council Husnick?
And a second from Councilmember Husnick. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Councilmember Gerard votes aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Husnick votes aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Munson votes aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Councilmember Beistrom votes aye.
Mayor Bain?
Mayor Bain votes aye. And motion passing? We will move on to Item 7D, the eighth hardware invoices. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to, Councilmember Gerard, I'll make a motion to approve the eighth hardware invoices as presented.
I'll second. And Councilmember Munson with the second. Karen, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Councilmember Gerard votes aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Councilmember Husnick abstains.
Councilmember Munson?
Councilmember Munson votes aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Councilmember Beistrom votes aye.
Mayor Bain?
Mayor Bain votes aye. Motion approved. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is Resolution 413202, the approval of MGA login account. Chief Peterson, is your audio working now? It is not. Are you on mute? No.
Does it have something to do with the headset?
Might be the headset. Do you want, I'm wondering if either Captain Weiss or Patrick could walk us through this instead?
If you're on the phone, use the phone. That should work for you. But you, your computer when you do that, otherwise you're going to hear it on both, both parts of it.
There you go. Nope. I'm wondering if there's a member, member of staff that could walk us through this item?
Okay, I'll, I'll see if I can try to do this. Basically, this is an agreement with, for a master subscriber agreement for court data services. What this does, it'll give the police department access to the Minnesota Government Access Program, which is all the electronic court, court records and documents. And sure, this is what they're looking for. I don't know if they've had this before, but it will, they're, when they're looking at files or court dates or things like that or, or cases that they have to be dealing with, if I got that right. Nigel, if I'm kind of close there. So that's what this is. There's, yeah, it tracks court case depositions and otherwise you wouldn't have access to them. So it's a, it's a new thing that they're looking to do, it looks like, to help them further understand and track what they do in court.
City Administrator Casey Captain Weiss here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can.
Okay, yeah, you're, you are correct. This local government access allows us to log in basically into Minnesota and into all their programs to give us access to the court documents. Everything that we do now is via what is called e-charging. And through e-charging, we sign all of our complaints so that it keeps us from driving down to Stillwater like we used to back in the day. And this is a pretty common document here that just gives us access to the state of Minnesota system. And in order to do that, we have to have council approval through this contract.
Captain Weiss, is this a new agreement or a manual?
This is the first time I have seen this. It wouldn't be normal for me to see this, Mayor, at my level. But it, it's very similar to other BCA contracts or Bureau of Criminal Apprehension contracts that we do sign. This just happens to be with the Office of Court Administration just down the street there in Main Paul.
Thank you. Council, any questions of staff on this item?
No.
Hearing, seeing none, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor Bain?
Councilmember Beistrom, go ahead.
I move adopts, adoption of Resolution 04-13-20-02, approval of master subscriber agreement for court data services and request form for MGA login account.
Husnick will second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Gerard votes aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Husnick votes aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Councilmember Munson votes aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Councilmember Beistrom votes aye.
Mayor Bain?
Mayor Bain votes aye. Motion carries. That concludes our action items for this evening. We will move on to staff updates. And let's go for a police update first, either Chief Peterson or Captain Weiss. I'm assuming Captain Weiss.
Yeah, let's go to Captain Weiss and give us a police, any police and also the update on what we're doing with COVID-19.
Sure, thank you.
It'd be great.
Mayor, members of council, let's get my numbers here together here. First of all, on the, on the police side, we are, I'm just kind of trying to pull some numbers up here for you. Obviously with the COVID-19, we have seen a slight reduction in some call load, which is, was anticipated through this with the stay-at-home order. We are running in the twenties of calls for service, somewhere in there. One of the things that we did add that actually boosted our numbers back up, but I'm not really counting them in our calls for service, is the birthday party drive-bys. Kind of a, a fun thing that one of our officers saw. And, you know, kids this time of the year, they, what's going on? They don't really have a, a reason for not having a birthday party. They had one last year, why can't I have one this year? So our police department takes a couple of squad cars and drives by their house, hits the siren and hits the horn, and it's been very well received. I wouldn't say we're getting inundated with them, but you know, it would, it's also very good for the officers. It, it puts a smile on their face and, and they seem to enjoy it. Unfortunately, on the other side of the aisle, we do have safety camp, which we had to cancel this year, obviously because of the COVID-19 concerns, which, which is too bad. I've been involved in safety camp for, for many, many years and it's been very well received by the public. But as we move forward with that, we'll get back on that, that train next year as well, for sure. So I just sent a message to Chief Peterson. If he has anything else for me to share, I will share with that. But getting to the, to the emergency management side of the aisle here, Chief Newman and I, and, and we meet on a daily basis and talk about any issues that arise. We work very closely with our partners, Anoka Shasago, and also our emergency management down in Washington County. And right now in the city of Forest Lake, we're sitting very well on PPE, or what's called personal protected equip, protection equipment. I would say we are in good supply. We're taking a, we're taking a inventory of this on a, on a, on a weekly basis and ordering as needed, knowing that stuff is three to four to six to eight weeks out. But right now, we are sitting very well with our protection for our first responders and actually have been able to help other agencies around us a little bit. We got on top of this pretty early, so we were able to, to make sure that our city is set and we can deliver quality services to the, to the citizens. Initially upon this, I believe it was March 4th, we did set up, kind of thinking ahead, a reimbursement account from FEMA. So we pulled the, the budget and everything that we're doing within this COVID-19 response has a specific line item budget number. And this will allow us to very easily go back and to begin to get reimbursement from FEMA for 75% of what we've spent. Now, the 25% is going to be hopefully taking up in, in the hours and the time that Chief Newman and I have spent battling this and the constant changing, you know, as you guys are very well aware, the, the changing protocols and the mask, no mask, the what level of mask and, and that. So we're, we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to offset that 25% with just our time and some other minor things that we've been doing. We did adjust our staff schedules early on, which has allowed us to have the minimum amount of people working that we need. And this has also given us a great level of flexibility, should our agency be hit with some COVID, you know, incidents within our department. So we do have a contingency plan in place to maintain safety for the citizens of Forest Lake on both the police and the fire side. All staff within the city that are able to work from home are doing so. And huge thank you on our end for, to Dan, for setting up in a very short notice amount of time the, the work-from-home capability on who we needed to, to have spent home. So and then right now, getting back to the numbers a little bit, we estimate that we spent between $4,000 and $5,000, which again, 75% of that is going to be, you know, subject to reimbursement by FEMA. So just kind of a, you know, a high level of what's going on in emergency management with the city. We're, we're confident. Our troops and our cops and our firefighters are, are in good spirits and we believe morale's high and, and, you know, we have, we got a good crew. So I can entertain any questions or any thoughts?
Any questions for Captain Weiss? Councilmember Beistrom?
A couple of things, Captain Weiss. I, I'm hearing from other communities periodically, we're, we're seeing some concerns around domestic issues, partially due to, you know, being contained and shut in. Are we seeing any increase in issues here in our community? And then the, the second thing I'm curious about is I see that we, the PD launched on Facebook today a new tip line, tip 411, and that's very exciting. And, and I'm just curious as to how that came to be.
Yes, that was on my list to cover and I did not even cover it. To the, to the domestic and the, and the, those type of calls, you know, we have not seen an increase. We've seen a decrease. I get a, a call list every week from our administrative staff and And as of right now, and, you know, the longer this goes, it could increase. But we do have plans in place for if a member of the household needs to get out and to find a safe haven, we do have those contact numbers. So we're prepared for that if we do see an increase. And the tip 411, great, great question. I was actually on the front end of this. Tip 411 is, it just so happens that it launched at the same time of this COVID-19. I want to be clear. Tip 411 is not set up for COVID-19. That's where the state number is in place for. Now, we're not going to ignore the tips that come through there, but tip 411 was spearheaded by SRO Megan Olsted and Nancy Carlson, our community engagement officer. And, you know, we have, we have a ton of ability to reach the public. We have IPods, we have emergency notification, we have Code Red. We, you know, the list goes on and on on how we reach the public, but very few options for the public to reach us in an anonymous way. So what tip 411 is just that. If there's anything out there, you know, 20,000 sets of eyes are better than, you know, the four or five sets of eyes that we have on patrol. So we are really going to get into a push to get tip 411 out, and we're really going to concentrate on the schools as well. One of the reasons that this was embraced so much with the city was it seems like every incident at school, a big incident, mass casualty incident, somebody always already knew something. And what tip 411 allows us to do is to give students an option for anonymously reporting something to us that, hey, something's going on in this or that, or, you know, this address or this person. So, and it's real time. They hit send, and four of us at the office get an alert that a new tip is received. Two RSROs or three RSROs, and then Nancy, and then I'm a secondary to Nancy here. So it's actually five of us that get the tip when it first comes in. So they're not going to be pushed aside, and we'll get them Monday morning at 8:00 AM. So they're going to be all weekend, real time. So thank you for asking that.
Captain Weiss, I have a quick question. I'm fielding a number of complaints about people's perceptions of members of the public violating the stay-at-home order. Are you also getting reports, and how are you handling those calls?
We are getting reports. We've had, I would say, probably three or four, I would say four, coming from the state hotline, the tip line that the state has set up. And we've also had some come through our communication center. And per the Attorney General and others, we've taken a very educational stance on it. We have not issued a citation for social distancing or stay-at-home order at this time. But we do answer every one of them, and we do educate and have educated everyone that we receive where we found a violation or a potential violation.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for Captain Weiss? Seeing none, we'll go on, move on. Thank you, Captain Weiss. We'll move on to Patrick, and we'll go to Peter after Patrick.
Just to reiterate, since the stay-at-home started, we have had all our employees working from home. They have, however, some have been taking turns coming in the office to keep the office running. We will continue that through May 4th and then wait and see what the governor does next. The building inspections were staggering, the inspectors to be in the building and do inspections. The nice thing about that is we have not seemed to have lost any of the level of service, so we're still out there inspecting. We're just doing it carefully and smartly. Our Public Works is back on full-time, all employees, the grass is growing, things have to be done, coffees have to be filled. We can't afford to have them. They are considered essential. So they'll be back on, they are back on. One of the issues that obviously you've all heard about is the yard waste. I have tried, I have communicated with Republic to try to get them to consider starting that up again. They've done that nationwide in an effort to keep their resources focused on their essential services of garbage and recycling. One of the things that they have found is that their levels of garbage pickup and recycling have tremendously gone up in these past three weeks to record highs. Obviously, a lot of people are home and cleaning out their bedrooms, sheds, garages, doing spring cleaning, whatever they're doing, but their garbage is out there. The tonnage is really high for what they're recording. I let Jamie talk about Castlewood, but the Castlewood golf course is ready to go anytime we are given the okay to go. Hopefully, that'll be sooner than later. We're already losing ground. We could have probably been open for half a month and making our way towards not having to pay $50,000, but we'll see how that goes. There has been some newspaper articles, radios about the stress on local government's cash, the local government's budgets. We're not seeing that right now. One of the things we are, we'll have to monitor is if the state reduces our local share or any shares that come to the municipalities. The other thing we have to look at is building inspection revenues permits. Right now, we're holding it on. We think we're good. As I communicated to you earlier, our cash and budget position is good due to sound financial management on behalf of the council and some recent changes in investment policies that we've made. And we just have to now look forward to waiting for the legion to meet, to talk about the Fourth of July and what's going to happen there. That's a big item on everybody's agenda, really probably one of the more unsure things because we don't know how long this is going to last, when the peak is, and what the next step from the Capitol is going to be. Jamie will talk about art in the parks, and FLOW, we had a discussion with FLOW last week, and they're waiting to figure out where they're going as well. That may have some impact on what the children and everybody's going, all these leaks and what they're going to do for the summer. So if that happens, however, it might give us a little bit of a lead time in making sure the fields are in great shape for next year. So that's what we have so far.
Thank you, Patrick. Can we circle back on the Republic yard waste issue? You know, I think this is just going to continue to be a concern, and I fully appreciate the concern of folks, you know, dumping those yard waste items into the lake like we heard today in open forum. You know, I'm sympathetic to, you know, want Republic to, you know, I'm glad they're taking a proactive approach on essential services. But I think as those restrictions have been lifted in other areas, I think we need to continue to keep pressure on them of resuming that as soon as possible. And so thank you, I know you've been in constant communication, and I think we should just continue to keep that pressure on because even if, you know, I know one of their concerns was that they had, you know, if they were to have staff members get sick, you know, if they could at least, because thankfully, knock on wood, incidents have been low, if they could at least start the service, and if they ended up in a staffing issue because of staff, you know, being sick, of course, we can allow them to pull back, but at least to get started, since some of those other comparable services, those restrictions have been lifted. I'm interested in any other feedback other council members may have or other conversations you're having with members of the public on this.
Well, I agree that Republic should take a second look. I mean, what they can put in place is probably, they're a nationwide company. They put in a nationwide policy. I think that all of us, if we look at the news every night and compare the state of Minnesota to other states, we're probably doing fairly well with keeping the virus from spreading and things like that. So maybe there's a, there's a way, and we'll keep calling and talking about, this might be a little different place, that we could probably resume that service. Just to remind everybody out there who's listening is that our own compost site, our own yard waste site is open. If you can't, if they're not picking it up, please feel free to go there. You can drop it off. There's no charge. It doesn't have to go into the lake or to the wetlands. It's a better place for it. There's easy access. So take advantage of that service while you can until we can get the curbside pickup back in play here.
The point that really struck me today is if we've got another service that is, you know, offering a competitive service and willing to do it, it's hard to continue to argue that there's an exclusive that should be granted to one provider. And I know this is a, you know, extreme situation, but, you know, as soon as we're able to move off of that, I think the better. And I think this is, we're just going to continue to hear more and more feedback.
We will continue to encourage them to start service.
Thank you. I do have just a general question. I'm not sure who this is directed to, but I'm hearing a lot of confusion around what's allowed and not allowed for liquors, off-sale, off-sale liquor bars and restaurants who are experiencing tremendous strain right now. I know the governor has been under some pressure to change those restrictions to allow broader off-sale. But I'm also hearing reports of certain communities seeming to do their own thing. Now, I don't know if potentially some of those reports are from restaurants that already had an off-sale license. So I could just use some more clarity around what is, what has changed, how we might relate compared to other Washington County cities, and just making sure that we're allowing the same flexibility as other neighboring communities.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
There's a lot of confusion out there.
I'm not sure what, what other communities are doing. Usually, though, in liquor licensing, onsite is an onsite license, and offsite's an offsite license, and never the two shall cross. I'll pass it to Karen to see if she has more information about it. If she saw anything from the state or from other communities.
I have not heard, have not anything from the state in terms of what the restrictions are for off-sale. Off-sale and on-sale are two completely separate licenses. If there's a business that has on-sale and they want to do off-sale, they have to have a separate license for that. So they would need to contact me. I can supply the application for them. I can go through the whole process. But it is a completely separate process than their on-sale license. So that being said, as far as off-sale, I think that is business as usual for them.
Mayor Bain. Kathy, Councilmember Beistrum, go ahead.
I think, I think what may be happening and where the confusion is, is that some of the restaurants are selling kind of their specialty mixers and telling you to take those packets home and mix them at home. So I think there's some perception that they're selling everything, but they're not. So, you know, they may sell a Bloody Mary mix and a beef stick or something, I don't know, and then tell you to take it home and mix it with your own alcohol. Because I've gotten that a little bit too, but, you know, when you do a little deeper dive into what's happening in some of these other communities, that's what they're doing. They found a clever little marketing strategy to increase sales without including the alcohol.
Mayor Bain. Councilmember Gerard, thank you, Councilmember Beistrum.
On the news tonight, they were discussing a very issue, and the governor will sign something if the House and the Senate, you know, and the state will go along with it. He'll sign whatever they present them. But at this point, there has been no change. So he is getting a lot of pressure to do something. They said if they bring him a bill, he'll sign it. But until then, I'm shaking.
Yeah, Mayor Bain.
Go ahead, Dan.
I saw that news. I knew that, I saw that news comment too, and they talked about he could do it with an executive order, but he wanted it to be more permanent. The problem is, when it's done through the legislature, then there's a time delay. And so there's been some argument about, you know, getting it done right away. So we'll see what happens. But I know, I know that, what I'm hearing is that the state legislature is pretty much in favor of allowing that for, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever it takes. So I hope that, I hope they get it done.
Patrick and Pete, Karen, I'll forward on to a couple of examples that have been sent to me, both some Washington County examples as well as just some neighboring communities. And to Councilmember Beistrum's point, it might just be slick marketing and some confusion, but I'd feel better having a more solid answer on what the overall response is.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Anything else for Patrick? Not, not seeing anything. Peter.
Your Honor, counsel, first, I'll jump in briefly at the tail end of the conversation about what the governor and the legislature can do about liquor laws. The current executive order doesn't pretend to say that as part of your carryout food service, you may now also carry out liquor. And there would be a significant legal concern if the governor were to attempt to do that by executive order when the statutes on the books say otherwise. And the argument about the emergency need for that is a lot more suspect than many of the other categories. The only other, the only other note I have for counsel is the current local emergency declaration that the city has is pretty well drawn to line up with the governor's current executive order that leaves us with the stay-in-place through May 4th. The local emergency lasts beyond May 4th and would give the city the opportunity to extend it if necessary at its first meeting in May. And so Pat and I will be watching, as you will for staff, I will for anything we need to do in the weeks, as the days approaching that deadline. We all expect to hear more from the governor and see whether or not we need an extension and what might be a prudent extension.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody have any questions for Peter this evening? Not seeing any. Donovan, we still got you. And let's go to, let's do Dan after Donovan.
Okay, well, we did have a planning commission meeting last week, and many thanks to Dan for helping us set that up. And we were able to have all the planning commission members and project team from the Common Bond group participate. So we did review that concept plan. We also discussed a comprehensive plan amendment because what's the use of having a comp plan unless you're, you know, adopting one unless you're going to change it, right? And so there's a lot of pieces to work on in that one. So I'm going to bring that one back to the planning commission next month. We do expect to have a May 13th meeting, and I think we're going to somehow have a public hearing with that one to get that public input in some, of some form. And also, we discussed the comprehensive rezoning, comprehensive text amendments that will be needed to make this 2040 comp plan consistent with our 2020 zoning code. And meanwhile, continue to process some fence applications, respond to inquiries, a few complaints. And moving forward, still working with Verizon to get a small wireless facility, three of them actually installed in the city. And I think that's something that's needed now, of course, more than ever. And that's about it. Again, I want to give my thanks to Dan publicly because he, with IT, have done a remote desktop where I can actually have all my files and software available. And luckily, my son had a computer set for him, so he could do his gaming with two screens. So I'm really set up for work as well. So with that, happy to take any questions from council.
Any questions for Donovan? Donovan, I had an opportunity to watch the planning commission meeting last week. And I'll leave this to you, you and Patrick, to kind of decide when the best time is. I think I'm comfortable that we're hearing consistent messaging with, between staff and EDA, staff and council, staff and planning commission related to, you know, plans for development at Headwaters 123 and potential impact of any zoning changes or any comprehensive planning, plan changes that need to come from that. But I think that there is potentially the need for greater communication or kind of an intersection point for EDA, planning commission, and council to do a joint workshop just to get all on the same page. And if there's an opportunity to do some sort of a joint workshop as part of this comprehensive plan change, I would welcome the opportunity to do that sooner rather than later. I think the EDA has questions for planning commission, and planning commission has questions for EDA, and it'd be helpful for us all to just get on the same page. So whenever you feel like that is the right time, let's maybe talk about logistics. Now, obviously, you know, watching, you know, we've got 16 squares today on a meeting, and, you know, doing 30 squares for Zoom is challenging, but we could, we could make it happen. So.
Okay, we will.
Anything else for Donovan? Thank you, Donovan. Dan.
Mayor members of council, besides wearing my IT hat a lot recently, I've been participating in the, the Chamber of Commerce is holding a twice a week meeting. Where local businesses get together and kind of discuss the issues of, of the data they're facing. Want to give a thanks to Chris Ng and Tyler Helsbeck for participating in those meetings as well. They're doing a phenomenal job of keeping the group up to date on the latest federal loan programs and state level loan programs. Those programs are, it seems like there's a new one coming out every single day and they are staying on top of it and making sure the local business community has those resources available. I can also take those links and put them on the city's COVID page. So we do have all of the current links to the local, the federal and state loan programs for small businesses on the COVID page. Found out today that there is a new Main Street loan program that the Fed just announced last week designed for more medium sized businesses. A lot of details on this one have yet to be sort of ironed out. So there'll be a lot more coming down the road on this one. But the Main Street program is another loan program that's coming out. On today's call, Fran Miron was there, the commissioner from Washington County, gave a brief update on the county, what the county is doing as it pertains to property taxes. They are currently workshopping the idea of delaying property tax payments for certain property tax owners to July 15th. They're gonna workshop that, I believe it's tomorrow is their second workshop on that and bring that back. I believe it's April 28th for the vote on that. So they're exploring options to see what they can do for delaying payments. It doesn't mean that they're not, they're still owed. I think what they're looking at is not enforcing the penalties that are associated with that is the latest as of today. But that's a fluid situation as well. So once that workshop is tomorrow, they'll bring that back in on the 28th for potential consideration. And then last Friday, I participated in a call with local Washington County government agencies, just kind of discussing what other agencies are doing to kind of help the local business community. A lot of good ideas were presented at that meeting. And I'm starting to work through what's feasible for the city of Forest Lake. So starting to look at what can be done at the local level as well to help the business community out. So that's what I've been working on and be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Any questions for Dan? Dan, thank you for all of the great work on, with the chamber and keeping the city's COVID page up to date with all of the resources available for both residents and businesses. As you mentioned, it's a, in the landscape that changes every single day. And, and kudos to you and also the chamber for just providing a great service to business owners at this critical time. So thank you. Much appreciated. And also wearing the IT hat at a time when nobody wants to wear the IT hat. So much appreciated.
I found out I've become a Zoom expert for myself and now I have for my wife and daughter as well. So it's, it's working out for me.
Right. Many thanks. Chief Newman, I see you on. Any updates this evening?
Mayor members of council, I do have a few updates for fire and building as well. The Minnesota GNR today put on burning restrictions for much of the state. And even though kids were building snowmen yesterday, the conditions are still dry. And with the upcoming weekend with temperatures in the 60s and 60s and several days strong weather of dry weather, grass fires are going to be a concern. So currently recreational fires three by three are still allowed. But Forest Lake and Columbus will not be issuing burn permits until the green up occurs. Currently, we're down about 9% year to date for runs. COVID has definitely reduced the number of calls, but we've been on several grass fires over the last couple of weeks, which has increased our calls, but overall still 9% down. We've had great turnouts for our runs, which is good to see. And then for building, update on where we are with plan review residential, we're one week out. And for commercial plan reviews, we are two weeks out. In, at the beginning of the year, when we were going through the process of looking for a building official, we brought in Mint Spec to help with doing plan reviews and inspections. About a month, month and a half ago, we started taking back the plan reviews. And so currently we're doing 100% of the plan reviews. And we are working on a plan to take over the building inspections. We are starting to see a slowdown for permit request. And with COVID-19, I would expect that this slowdown is going to continue for probably the next couple of months. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Chief Newman? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you for the update. Move on to Ryan and then we'll do Jamie afterwards.
Mayor City Council, Ryan Goodman, City Engineer. All the restrictions were lifted by the state today. So you'll probably start seeing quite a bit of activity of construction vehicles now moving about. We've had a kickoff project management team meeting with Washington County related to Everton Avenue or county stated Highway 33 to talk about the up and coming project. The county would like to join through a Zoom meeting at our May 18th city council workshop. Kind of give a introduction, talk about goals of the project prior to do public open house, which they're in the preliminary stages of discussing how we're going to handle that. Obviously, it'll probably be something online and it'll be kind of something open on a two week period kind of thing. So they're kind of going through those dynamics now, but our first interaction with them, I would expect them to connect in with, through our city council workshop in May. And we had the bid opening for the local street project and you guys awarded that project tonight. So actually the same contractor that did their last year's project. So they did a pretty good job last year too. So that's good. And then the bid opening for the Highway 97 Goodview Eighth Street project is this Thursday at 9:00 AM. So we'll have that depending on how fast we get to other paperwork approvals on the back end of that. It may be back at the next city council meeting for award or it might have to wait one more council meeting. It's just a process MINDOT goes through after bid opening to even, even afterward. So that's what I have. Been working very closely with Donovan and Dave. So I don't think we've missed a step there through what's all been going on. Other than that, I'll just open up with any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ryan this evening? Ryan, are you hearing any discussion of, you know, state's current budget situation and what it might mean for funding and projects? And are you, are you hearing anything, any projections?
MINDOT's moving full speed ahead. We got an email on our state aid stuff. So there will be no reduction in state aid funds for 2020. Obviously, depending on what legislation does moving forward or how long the situation lasts, there could be some potential adjustments in 2021. Other than that, we did have a slight bump up this year. So, you know, worst case, do we get pushed back what we were seeing in 18 funding or 19 funding? Other than that, there's been some sporadic cities through the state that have halted stuff in the fear of what's going on. Brooklyn Center is in a big lawsuit now after they went through and then delayed their projects. So the contractors are obviously claiming damages. They could be have done being doing work versus bidding on other work. So that's some stuff going on. But other than that, what we got for pricing on our local project was great. So we did some quotes, packages request too and got great pricing. So, you know, as long as those guys keep having stuff that's reliable to work on, I think you're going to get good pricing. Obviously, oil's down.
Right. If we were to have, so if we were to have some of our larger projects for some reason because of the contractor be delayed because of, you know, you know, COVID related items, do we have any protections or what does that, what does that look like?
It's probably more of a attorney weighs in on this one, but let's just say you do something with the governor enforced. Yeah, you would open yourself to some risk on that situation. If you're less restrictive than what the state is imposing on stuff right now, I don't think you have anything to worry about. You know, the projects that we are having move forward. You're social distancing all the time. It's going to take larger, heavy equipment. There'll be separated and separate machinery. Our pre-cons, we're either holding through Zoom meetings or other online devices. Or we could stand in a parking lot and stand 10 feet apart from each other if we wanted to, if it's small enough. So, so we've adjusted. We, you know, our workers are considered essential along with the contractor workforce. There are provisions that's required within, someone will be, might be wearing masks on job sites. Regardless of what they're doing or even if they're working individually, just protocol certain companies and stuff like that. Some surveyors you'll, might see wearing face shields and masks. So that's some of the stuff that's, we're kind of still adapting to on what equipment's being required to be used by particular companies or individuals.
That makes sense. Thank you for being on top of it. Any other questions for Ryan this evening? Not seeing any. Let's go to Jamie and we'll go to Sandy after Jamie.
All right.
Good to see you, Jamie.
Hi. I do have a few updates tonight. So I'll run through those and then open up for questions after. So as Patrick mentioned, Castlewood Golf Course is ready to go for the governor order. We are able to maintain golf courses. So they're moving forward with that. But they've been introduced to the golf community and have a new website and page. So they'll be actively communicating with those members and running some specials to hopefully acquire some more golfers this season. So we're hopeful for that May 4th date, if that holds true to being able to get out. Also last Thursday had a Fenway Athletic Advisory Committee meeting. It was my first Zoom meeting. But we did have two council members present, Councilmember Monson and Vice President and two representatives from the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission and then the president of FLAW, which is Al Haughey. And really we talked about the facility use agreement that is due with them. And just to get to a point that we would be in consensus so that if their season can go forward, we're, we're positioned well with that. So just a quick update from FLAW, their season is currently on hold. Again, with COVID-19, there's a whole lot of uncertainties. They're looking to try to still get the season in, but obviously it'd be likely delayed. And they've had some challenges with that with restaurants being closed, bars and restaurants closing and gambling revenue that they heavily rely on. So there's, there's some challenges there. But the conversation around our agreement was, went well. Pretty much everyone's in consensus. It would be a structure where the city holds the maintenance contract and FLAW would pay a fee to the city for use. Prior to COVID-19, we are going to look at a lump some due from FLAW. However, we did change that in the contract to a weekly fee, which is still to be determined. I think we're really waiting to see how things unfold yet in a couple of weeks. So the Parks Commission will talk about that next Tuesday at our meeting. It might be something that the city needs to look at to say what's a, what rate, what's our weekly fee due from FLAW. So aside from that, I think everything else, we, the other piece of length, we had a lengthy conversation on scheduling of fields at Fenway. The contract is written so that FLAW has priority use of the field. And aside from that, the city would be kind of that point of contact to take on any additional reservations. Whether it's just, you know, a community group wanting to use the fields for a family gathering or whatnot. So just having the city be more of a central point of contact for that. So there's just a couple of minor updates we got to make to that contract. That should go through to the Parks Commission next Tuesday and then look to get that to counsel your next meeting you have. I also did have a special meeting for Parks, Trails and Lakes on Friday. And this was about parks and trails used during COVID-19. So when the first, about a month ago, and the first restrictions for stayed home went into, into effect, the city immediately closed playgrounds and put signage up immediately regarding that. Obviously, they're not clean and sanitized. You can't maintain social distancing requirements. So playgrounds have been closed for a while. Golf courses are also closed, just part of the state home order. So from there, we just really hadn't had a chance to talk about what does that mean for everything else, parks and trails related during this time. The governor order does encourage people to get out and be active. However, you do need to follow all of the guidelines set forth by Minnesota Department of Health, social distancing, you know, don't go to the park and trails if you're sick. So we talked about all of that and just a, we're, just a brief update on what we came, came to with that. So playgrounds and golf courses are going to continue to remain closed until further notice. Picnic tables and benches, those are, we're going to put signage up that we don't recommend use at this time. And we're going to hold off on our portables being delivered to the parks in alignment with that May 4th timeline. And then as it relates to basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts, baseball fields and the volleyball courts, all of those are going to remain open. However, to follow social distancing guidelines and all of the requirements set forth. Basketball, there's no team or contact or pickup games allowed. It's just really for, in use, use by individuals within a family, in a household. So they can go shoot hoops and get together and practice free throws. Similarly, tennis, you know, singles or doubles, really only people playing at the time are allowed on the courts. Pickleball, we're also, that's remaining open, just only the individuals playing a game at the time following social distancing are allowed within the court area. Anybody not playing will have to wait outside of the perimeters. And similarly, baseball and volleyball, those can be used by individuals within a family in small groups, keeping social distancing in mind. So a big part of that is we just hadn't had a chance to connect on it and our communication around it. We just had the playgrounds closed. So we are going to update this at all of those facilities on our Facebook website. And even maybe try to get some communication out to the Forest Lake Times. I think social distancing is going to be a thing for a while. So we want people to be out and using parks and trails, but we need to make sure they're doing so safely. So better communication and understanding to the public this week, I think will be helpful. Parks Commission is going to revisit this next Tuesday and just make sure that everything's going okay. I've been following this, you know, throughout the other communities and, you know, this is, this is a challenge everywhere. Cause it's one of the only things that can be open. So people are kind of flocking to these open spaces. I think Forest Lake's been doing pretty well and obeying the orders. So I think with some additional communication and understanding, we hope that, you know, we can continue to see people safely using parks and trails at this time and continue to encourage that. So at that meeting, we also did have a brief conversation on the spring fling event that would, was scheduled for May 9th. And that has been canceled at this time. Lastly, Arts in the Park, we haven't had a conversation on this with Parks Commission, but we will talk about that next Tuesday, April 21st. And really this is the time where just, just prior to COVID-19, I was about to start executing contracts for entertainment, getting everything with vendors organized and lined up. So all of that has been on hold as I kind of see and see what's to come with this and navigate through that process. So that'll be our conversation next week, but looking to see if it's delayed, how that affects vendor feed and our entertainment for the summer. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Any questions for Jamie? That's a lot. Thank you for the very thorough update.
No problem.
Sandy and we'll do Karen after Sandy.
Okay. But the only thing I have right now is to let everybody know, we still are on schedule for audit for the week of 27. Going to be doing it a little bit differently than what we anticipated. We're going to do it remotely, which, you know, we've got everything in place and the auditors' needs are going to be met. So I don't think there's going to be an issue with it. So just wanted to let everybody know that's still on schedule.
Very good. Any questions for Sandy? Thank you. And Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some updates. Last week, we discussed the Board of Appeals meeting. And I guess there were some questions on that. And so I did some checking. I was able to find out from Washington County, the Assessor's Office that they have canceled all of their, what they call open book meetings for people to come and dispute their property tax assessments. However, there's an option and people need to call or email the county before May 6th. Everybody that goes over to City Hall for this, there is a note posted on the door on the, on the front. on the, on the front door and the side door. And then it is also up on our website. Information is on our front page of our website where they can go to either email or call. But it does have to be done prior to May 6th. Residents do not need to be in person at a meeting. This can all be handled generally via email, is what they told me. So that is posted. The other thing I wanted to mention is that open forum option. There, we have email that they can email in their comments. The other option is we do have a Dropbox on the south side of City Hall. And so anybody who wants to drop a letter or note in there can do that as well. Kind of set a deadline on that. So when we have meetings on Monday, because I think we're going to be doing this for a little while, we'll set a deadline noon to try to make sure that if you do have comments that want to be read at open forum, please bring those and drop them off by at least noon so that myself or somebody can access them to make sure we have them in time for the meeting. And again, emails, we'll take emails on that, too. And that's at info@c-id-forest-lake.mn.us. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to highlight is a lot of information that has been going out in our weekly emails. And so sign up for those right on our website. If you go to our website, you scroll down a little bit, there's four buttons that go across. One that you want to click on is one that says stay connected. And then what it asks you for is your first name, your last name, and mail address. We do not use that information to solicit anything from you. We don't sell addresses. That all is to receive information that's going on in the city. Again, what I said is that the weekly email has been packed full of information for everyone. So it's a good resource to collect information that's happening, what's going on. There's COVID information on there. There's a lot of website information, links that you can go to to find what you need. So I wanted to really highlight that and try to, well, encourage people to sign up for that as well. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Kathy?
Are we, are we promoting that on Facebook as well? I think it wouldn't be a bad idea. I'm not so sure that our residents realize that's an option. And it might be another way to get the word out. I would suggest that also with the kind of Plan B for the Board of Appeals, that we promote that as well via social media.
That's a, that's a Dan question. I do, I think he has the information for Board of Appeals posted on Facebook. I, I update website stuff. So a lot of the stuff that you see that's getting updated over onto our city website is me. Dan does all the Facebook updates. So I don't have access to that currently. That's something that he's handled. So I don't know where, if he's, he's still here, so I think, so that's a Dan question.
I'll, I'll get it after. I haven't done the hard, we did the hard push a couple of years ago for it. But we are seeing growth in that list overall. But I think I can definitely throw a post on there or get it up for him that integrates right in the social media. So I'll add that to the calendar for Facebook.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Karen? Karen, I do think, I know we've talked about this in just an update for council. I, I do think that there are, we've made tremendous progress with residents over the years on the Board of Appeals on managing that process and getting in front of what used to be a very active process. And so I, when the time is right, I would, I think we should approach the county. Generally, when you turn that over to the county, it's for a two-year period. And given the circumstances, I think we should rally hard for the county to allow us to take that back next year. Because again, I think it's been of value and a couple, certainly for council members as well, to sit in on those meetings and kind of understand some of those concerns and some of the market dynamics in the city.
Right. And I think it's Catherine or Kathleen, Kathleen, I can't think of her name, over at Washington County Assessor's Office had said that she was, after we're through with this, I realize it's a two-year turnover to the county. She does, too. And what her comment was is that after we get through COVID-19 issues, she said that she's going to push and advocate hard for the city of Forest Lake to be able to take that back. It is by state statute. But given the situation, there's a lot of cities that, county is what it sounds like. I have kind of kept track of the list. And so we're not the only city in this situation right now. And it sounds like the county would advocate to try to get that pushed back to the city level.
That's terrific. I didn't realize that was a state statute. I'll add that also to my Housley Detmer list when the time is right. So, perfect.
Yep, I can provide you with the statute if you want, if you need that.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think we have Dave tonight, is that right? And I think we've picked up all staff members. Please, if I've forgotten anybody, please jump in. And not seeing anybody, let's move on to council and mayor updates. Councilmember Husnick, let's start with you, and then we'll do Councilmember Beistrum.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Husnick, I really don't have any updates. We haven't had any Airport Commission meeting since March 4th. So then I missed the last School Board meeting, too. So, no updates at this time.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Beistrum?
Well, I think Jamie did a stellar job kind of capturing the FLOW Advisory Committee meetings. So I don't, I don't need to repeat that. Just one update from me that I continue to keep in touch with the Coordinator of the Senior Center, Sharon. And just do periodic check-ins with her to see if there's anything they need, any way that we can support them. You know, just generally, how are the senior center members doing? And I'm happy to report that all is well at this point. And they appreciate being able to consider us a resource.
Kathy, did, did they get the communication from the YMCA on the hot meal delivery? That might be of particular interest to their group, because I know that was one of the services that they're no longer able to provide?
Yes. Yes, they're, they're, yep. They're pretty on top of most of the food resources in the community available to them. They're also, we've also set up a partnership, I think I mentioned the last time, with the Forest Lake Good Samaritans. And then I've connected them to a couple of churches in the area, too, that are serving as a resource for them to, you know, run and pick up groceries or prescriptions or whatever they may need. So I think they're, I think they're well resourced at this time.
Very good. Thank you. We'll, Councilmember Gerard, and then we'll do Councilmember Monson. Councilmember Gerard?
No real update. The, we watched the planning commission video. And as you know, Donovan, he was a very good update there, so that's all.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Monson?
I, too, don't have much to update. Rush line meetings are canceled and they have not moved to online yet. I imagine they could at some point. And then attended the Fenway Advisory Committee. And like Kathy said, Jamie did a great job summarizing that. So look forward to that agreement coming back to council at some point.
Very good. Thank you. Most of my updates have been covered already, just scanning through a couple of highlights. So first of all, just thank you to residents for continuing to follow the governor's stay-at-home order and all of the patience during this time, as well as thank you to Chief Peterson, Chief Newman, Captain Weiss, our emergency response team on making sure that everything is squared away from a public safety perspective. It's great to hear that we are in great shape for PPE and consider us fortunate in many, in many regards. Also, just want to pass along again, a thank you to Nanette from the Chamber, Chris Eng from Washington County CDA, Tyler Hasselbeck from Open to Business, the value that they are bringing to, and also Dan on them from the city. We are, we created, the EDA created a subgroup of three members to participate in those biweekly chamber update calls. And the amount of information that's being exchanged is just tremendously helpful. Our goal during this time has really been an information conduit and to also make sure that the EDA and staff are aligned with some of the business needs so that we can use that information to help formulate our own next steps. And as Dan reported, he has formulated a list and look forward to bringing that forward. Also, I am on a mayor forum. That's just been incredible, that's part of the Legion of Minnesota Cities. And that's just been a great resource as we are considering parks and trails considerations, as we're considering EDA factors, public safety. It's just great to hear what other cities are doing and to be able to contribute on that. Also, you know, 4th of July weighs heavily on my mind at this moment. Thanks to staff for turning around some quick thoughts last week around what from a city perspective we should be considering. I know the Legion has a board meeting tonight, and I look forward to connecting with them later this week. I think the first question on the table is when do we need to make a decision? Nobody wants to make a tough decision, but let's at least be aligned on timing of that decision. And I think that's the first thing that we'll be connecting on, doing a gut check later in this week, and we'll circle back as well. I believe that is everything that is on my list. Is there anything else this evening that we need to talk about? I know it's been a while since we've had a council meeting. Anything else spring to mind?
Everybody stay well.
Yeah, stay healthy, right?
Do what you gotta do.
And we, right, that's exactly right. And we've survived our first Zoom meeting. So thank you, everybody, for your patience and making it work. The logistics can be challenging. Not seeing anything else, but go ahead, Councilmember Husnick.
I, I have to put a big thank you out to Dan. He's helped me walk through some things that I never would have gotten through tonight without him. The IT guy, you know? So, thanks, Dan.
Yeah, Dan saved everybody's bacon the last couple of weeks. So many thanks. Not hearing anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to adjourn. This is Gerard.
Councilmember Gerard, is there a second?
Second.
Of course. Second was Councilmember Husnick. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Gerard votes aye.
Councilmember Husnick?
Husnick votes aye.
Councilmember Monson?
Monson votes aye.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Councilmember Beistrum votes aye.
Mayor Bain?
Mayor Bain votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.